Let's call meeting to order. Hi, how are you? Mayor Vallosa is here. Ty, would you lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
Pledge and be. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you say the prayer please?
Yes. Father God, we come before you today in the mighty, mighty name of Jesus. We thank you for your son who was sent to die upon the cross for our sin. God, we thank you for making all of this possible for us. We ask for your will to be done tonight, God, in the presence of everybody here. God, we ask for guidance. We ask that you will help us to make the right decisions, to come to compromise with what we need to. God, we ask that you will help us and that you will teach us, in the mighty name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Nita, roll call.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Foster.
Present.
Counselor Segola.
Here.
Counselor Locke.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
A quorum is declared.
No modifications tonight, so approval consent agenda, minutes, regular meeting, February 20th. Twenty twenty special meeting minutes, February 25th, 2020, and review and approval of counts payable.
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
And second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of February 20th, 2020, special meeting minutes from February 25th, 2020, and the approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? Nita.
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Counselor Segola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, contracts, agreements, and leases, golf course lease. Does have time to look at it, read it. Don't have time to look at it, so we're gonna approve what was sent out. Have you all had your packet? Have you all received?
The only thing I'm not clear on is do we have agreement on the revised lease?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If I may inform the council a couple things. One, no, to answer your question, counselor, we do not have an agreement on the revised lease as was returned by the golf course. In order to have this discussion this evening, the council has the lease that you prefer, and you could make a motion on either their version or the version the council provided down. And if that gets a second, then you have substantive discussion both with yourself, staff, and the golf course board members who are present.
There's not a lot there to discuss with both the original revision and the revisions of the provision.
So maybe we should make a motion to get into discussion. Think to go up, make the motion on one of these leases, we can get into discussion on that.
Can we make a motion to approve the lease that was sent to them? So we need a motion, a second, then we can go into discussion.
I would motion to approve of the lease sent to the golf course club.
And second cap.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the lease that was presented to the golf course on March 2nd, 2020. Is there any more discussion? Not as well, everyone said.
Yeah, the, that leaves things a little unsettled in my mind. We're talking about a lease that was sent, but we have received back alterations to that. Just a little unfamiliar as to the propriety of just voting on the one without the other, Ty.
If I could interject again, Mr. Mayor. So the point here, counselor, is that now that you've had a motion, a second, on the lease that the city provided to the golf course, you can now entertain any discussions you'd like to have both with the golf course board and staff and yourselves. So you're not tied to that lease, certainly a vote against it would then extinguish that attempt. But, you know, this is where you have the discussion, and it is rightfully so. Because the golf course moved up their opening date after we had the work session with them, this becomes imperative that there is actually a lease on the facility that allows them to operate it.
One of the questions I had, and this is gonna go to city staff. There's been, of course, no small amount of discussion that has gone on regarding this. But I saw something in there that said that the golf club was in arrears on what they were paying to pay on the lease. Can you elaborate on that, please?
Certainly, in last year's lease, it required a $10 a month payment, and that payment was not made.
Has that been a habit? Has that been going on for a while?
This was the first year of the lease with this golf course.
Oh, okay.
With prior leases, so that was just last year's lease.
Okay. And one of the other things that I saw go flying through on the discussion was, and it was also mentioned in our special session that we had, that one of the buildings, let's see, the clubhouse should be knocked down, I believe is the exact words that the board should be using, they're used on that. Now, I noticed in the lease that there's something about the upkeep of buildings. What was the state of that building when this, when the golf club took over?
I believe at the time, counselor, although I was not here, that it was fine. The golf club has been roughly in charge of this premises since 1927. If I got the date wrong, let me know. But somewhere back in that time, I don't know how old the building itself actually is, but the golf course has been in operation and possession of the golf course through various leases since somewhere around there. It may be slightly later date, but certainly, say, the most safest thing since 1940. So buildings have been there, and they have been in possession of the golf club, or actually, yeah, it was a golf club before, and now it's a different entity, but basically, you know, they've been over there a long time. You know, and one of the things that I wrote back to the council is if the golf, sorry, if the golf course board feels that those buildings are so damaged that they're uninsurable, how can they then be habitable? I think that's a reasonable question.
Okay. So when they originally took over this building, which is technically a city-owned building, is that, that correct?
That is correct.
That the building was in decent shape and?
Probably not when this group took it over, counselor, you know, a couple years ago, because there's been different golf boards over time, and there was actually a lapse in the lease for a couple of years there as well. But, yeah, and the building's been dilapidating over time, but, you know, and I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this history of it, but essentially, the golf club has been responsible for the maintenance operation of the golf course. The city's part is to provide, has been, provide certain amounts of labor's material over the years, as well as providing non-revenue water and the land.
Okay, so it would be difficult to say that it is this particular board's responsibility that that building fell into disrepair?
Oh, we're not categorizing that they were responsible for it falling into disrepair. They haven't had it long enough. When they got it, it was in disrepair.
Okay, thank you.
Well, then, another question. We have a lease that has been, has suggested alterations to it by the lessor. If this were approved, where, I guess that's my legal question, is if this were approved, where do we stand with the lease and with the relationship with the golf course if they haven't agreed to the original conditions?
Well, if there's no real lease in place, there's no ability to, the board operate the golf. I mean, really should have a lease in place, and given the different additions that have come in lately, I think it makes it tough, because I'm not sure when they're wanting to open here, but it's probably pretty quick. One option would be to say, we will, the city will accept the lease that we sent to them for now, and if there's gonna be corrections, or additions, or changes, maybe you look at some kind of a work session to see if, you know, the council is interested in doing any of that. But it seems like it might be pretty tough to, to start trying to redo a lease here at a council meeting. It's just back and forth, back and forth on each clause, and I don't know if that's gonna be very productive, especially if they wanna get in business. So certainly, one option would be to say, here's the lease we sent you, we'll sign it, and if you guys wanna approve it, all right. But I think trying to go through and figure out whether you're gonna act on every clause that they have sent for addition or correction might be a little bit non-productive tonight. I don't know.
So, just thinking, a better choice might just be to approve a lease and then have that workshop.
Right, if, if you're gonna make any changes, I think it would make more sense to go through clause by clause at a workshop and then decide if you're gonna make any changes or not.
How, how soon is the golf club need to open? So would that be something that the club would be willing to do? Meet with the council for some compromise on the revised lease, or? Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, if I could, you know, one other option, and I just discussed this with the city attorney, I mean, I think a work session would be useful. You know, we're pretty far apart, at least from the staff standpoint versus what the golf club sent back. But if the council is willing to have another work session with them, you could give them a 30-day extension on the existing document that expired February 28th, and, you know, make it for no longer than that, and it gets hammered out one way or the other prior to March 28th. Would that be a way to actually have a work session where we can go through this in detail? And that would allow them to meet their opening for Saturday. You know, it doesn't resolve all the differentials in some of the terms, which I'd say are 180 degrees, you know, polar opposites, but it would preserve the opportunity to have the golf club and open for this weekend for Crane Fest, and hopefully, y'all can work something out through a work session, or whatever methodology you'd like, but that might be one way to deal.
Makes sense to me.
I have a question, please. If it were to open on March 7th, and, you know, hopefully not, but something go wrong, someone get hurt, somebody, who's responsible? If there's not a lease in place, who, who's responsible for that?
Well, so, counselor, what we're suggesting is that extension of the existing lease.
Okay.
So who would be responsible? Well, the club would be first, and, you know, people sue the city regardless. So that would be the normal positions, but with the extension of the lease, it gives them a legal right to remain operating it.
Okay. But they would be responsible, they would be the first responsible?
Yeah, it depends on who the attorneys are, but essentially, yes.
That would at least have, there'd be a lease in place, at least if they needed to get open. I think there would be a lease in place, and I think you need to have a lease in place.
Absolutely.
And then, if you wanna have a workshop and try and figure out if there's gonna be changes, you can do that, or else agree to disagree.
I'd certainly be in favor of city manager's suggestion to extend the lease, but I think we'd have to do something with the current motion.
Right.
So one quick question before that. About the buildings not insurable, do you guys have insurance on that right now? Did Casey have some?
We have insurance on our contents within the building, and my ability to prove it is not as good as the software.
Do you guys need a work session?
I think, it's probably gonna be on the terms.
On the terms.
Now, you already have a motion, a second on the floor, and that discussion council, so you would have to have a vote on it. And if it fails, then we need to have a motion to table the matter. Or no, you need to have a motion in desire to extend the existing contract until March 28th. That would be a second motion to vote for. So if somebody called the question currently, then you'd vote on the motion on the floor, and then you could have a motion or an extension of the course that was expired. So based on that, so we need to?
Can we, may we clarify, the original, we've had a lot of discussion here. The original motion was?
Sorry.
The original motion is to approve the lease that was sent to the golf course by the city.
Okay.
Was that seconded? It was.
Yeah, so it's seconded, so we need to vote on it.
Nita.
Counselor Johnson.
Nay.
Counselor Foster.
Nay.
Counselor Locke.
Nay.
Counselor Segola.
Nay.
Mayor Becker.
No.
Motion does not pass, and therefore fails.
I would like to make a motion to have a work session, or to table the matter and to have a work session with the golf club.
So you need to put in order, counselor, sorry. So actually, if you're wishing it's gonna be the lease, and the motion being to extend the lease.
The existing lease to March 28th, 2020. Along with the?
The work session, you don't need a motion for it. If you can just tell staff you're gonna have it, plus have a date.
I would like to make a motion to extend the current lease with the golf club till March 28th, 2020.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to extend the current lease to March 28th, 2020, for the golf course. Any more discussion?
Does that allow them to open on the 7th, or does that keep them from opening?
Yes, if you're able to, we'll be extended to that.
Okay.
No more discussion? Yes, sir. Yeah, let's get this motion done. Nita.
Counselor Foster.
Nay.
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Counselor Segola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay. How would we have open for a work session, Nita?
So we have the 9th, the 10th, the 16th, or the 17th. Those are Mondays and Tuesdays.
Tell me the dates again.
Monday, the 9th, Tuesday, the 10th, Monday, the 16th, Tuesday, the 17th.
I'm, I'm good with any of those dates. The one who's St. Patrick's Day.
Tenth?
It is. Some people may wanna drink cream beer that night.
How would, how would, do some do them night, or do some do them?
Yeah, so the 10th. Everybody good with the 10th?
Good.
You guys?
Good. You guys good with the 10th?
March 10th?
March 10th. Six beam?
Did I work for you guys? March 10th?
We're good.
Good.
March 10th, the 10th work session.
What time?
16th.
Six.
Jerry. Thanks, guys. Should you all stick to the rest of this? Well, thank all you youth for being here tonight.
Guys can all move up to the front.
Warden commission appointments for city council. I didn't give Ty too much of a dig, but you guys don't forget. Time learner instructor, Mayor Vallosa, thank you for being here tonight.
You're a prescienter and all community community support that you have. I'm just sure of the very best.
Thank you, Ty. Nita.
Okay, so currently, these are the boards that either you have a member of the commu, excuse me, the community sit on, or a council member, or a city staff sit on. The Rio Grande Board of Health is currently Carol Schroeder. Any, do we wanna keep that, it that way?
Carol's still been very involved in that, I believe, right?
As far as I know, yes.
Did you put that list in my packet?
No, I forgot to.
Me personally, I'd say?
It's in your last packet.
Yeah, I gotta do three of them as far.
Unless somebody else is wanting to step up on that board. Carol's doing a very good job, and she has something to report, she would usually.
Okay.
That's not just up to me, but.
Okay. Urban Renewal Authority is currently Dale and Forrest.
I'm gonna do that.
Okay. Tree Board is currently Rob and Carol and Jim Poston, and Rob is the city staff that sits on that board.
Where's that?
The tree?
The tree board?
The tree board.
I'm sorry, Rob, that there was no member of council on that board. Would, would they refer to remember?
That's completely up to you as a board. Carol's been, Carol and Margot, we also have a couple of folks from the Forest Service and the other minority. I act as the city liaison to the board, to you guys, to both of us, so it's however you choose to do it. But it is a board that if a council member wants to pretend or to be on the board, it's up to me.
Yeah, personally, real happy with what the current board is to do it, so I'm happy with what's going on. You're welcome.
Anybody, do you guys wanna get on that board, the tree board?
No, I'm waiting for another one.
Okay, the next one is the Youth Advisory, and that's Jaime, and those are intermittent meetings. They're not scheduled.
Does he need another person to help him?
That I'm not sure of. I know that, that he meets every once in a while. If, I don't even know if they're quarterly meetings.
Nick, do you know how often he meets?
No, I was wondering if that board actually at one time had served as an advisory board. I'm not sure if that's been worked.
I don't believe so. I believe it's something that he does with other directors within the valley.
Then that would probably be like a, I know they have like an annual meeting, and then it would probably be before certain seasons, but they would do less sports.
What about?
Do you need to buy one?
Sure.
Okay, the next one is the Golf Course Board. Currently, it's Jenny and Bob. Jenny Sines, our finance director, and Bob Gill, our HR coordinator.
I said, you don't want me?
You okay with leaving it for now? No, they've already come. Leave that one for now. The next one is the Library Board, and we don't currently have anybody sitting on that board.
Kathy Lorenz was?
Uh, yeah, Kathy Lorenz is actually now the new librarian.
Excuse me, I'm on that board.
Okay.
I was just appointed last week, so if.
You were?
I was asked to be on.
Oh, okay, I thought, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I thought you said you were disappointed at the board.
No. So I can report if there's something going on to the council.
I personally would be, would be good with that, because that makes the community involved.
Okay. The next one is the Crane Festival, which is a seasonal meeting, and right now, we have Victor. Counselor Segola.
Still good on that one?
Yeah. Do you know when there's another meeting?
I do not.
Yeah.
And did you get with Jerry at the chamber?
Probably tomorrow, right?
We missed him all there at meet all week.
And they are good at appointing citizens to these.
The next one is the Council of Governments. It's Forrest.
Really, pretty good on that one. You do all Forrest?
You demand Forrest. Forrest, you're doing a great job, we really appreciate it.
Upper Rio Grande Economic Development.
That is what I'll take.
Forrest on that two years.
Forrest in charge of that, right?
Yes.
I'll, I'll take that.
Forrest is the president.
Okay, it's like their art session. It's like their art session.
Uh, the airport board is Rob and Forrest. I just have Rob and Forrest. You just signed all the paperwork.
I just won't be on the board.
Yeah? Put me down. No guarantee, but put me down.
Um, Rio Grande Basin Roundtable is Jason Lorenz currently, and I do not know when they meet.
If I could recommend the council, I would let you come on that. He's been on that for like-
A long time.
A long time. Based on his knowledge, especially in knowledge, he knows more about that than anybody else at the city, so. I would, yes.
Okay. Uh, planning and zoning is currently Gary. Councilor Johnson.
I'm okay. Somebody else?
How often do you?
Uh, once a month, the last Thursday of each month.
That's what you like.
What time do you?
Uh, we meet at six o'clock in the evening.
Just like usually every Saturday for a month, in reality.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have it scheduled for the end of February, and they moved that to this next one to the end of March.
March twenty-sixth is our next meeting, and we'll probably, we currently have two items on that agenda, possibly a third.
Put me down.
So do you both want to do it, or just one of you, or?
No, you. Do you want us to, or you want?
Not if you're in. No. No, I don't. They just need representation. That, that is a good, a good group. So, yeah, if you want to do that, that's fine.
Okay.
Thanks, Gary.
City school commish- um, committee is Dale and Forrest.
We do need another member for that. I mean, I appreciate that mayor, and that time is really kind of you. Um, and with all my, oh, I wrote a special plea to the council, and if somebody else could join that. It's eight o'clock on the first, what was today? Thursday. The first, the first Thursday of every month, eight AM. Chief's usually there, myself, and sometimes a lot of people join us. Got the superintendent of schools, and the Asian one for, uh, very well. Really connected, we had a really topicful discussion, just worrying about some stuff going on in schools. And the PD, we got to grow the virus, because, you know, he doesn't. So really, if we could get other council on there, it would be great. Somebody else can pick that, because I'm starting to be good to.
I'd be glad to take that trade.
Okay, I'll just swap you out there, man.
Okay. Or do you want some stuff on the school board?
Uh, the CML Policy Commission meets quarterly, and that's Councilor Johnson.
What was that again?
The CML Policy Commission.
Did you say you wanted to be on?
No. I did not. Gary's doing a great job.
Quarterly.
Is that here?
Uh, no. She's usually in Denver. At the, so it would be with Kevin Ballmer at the, for CML.
They usually meet, you know, also.
Sometimes, sometimes they're in Denver.
Oh, they really are. Okay, no wonder. But I would, I would consent to stay on that. I sure have heard anything.
You can remote him on that council. I believe you can remote him to the meetings that are in Denver.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Okay. I've done that with the Rio Grande Prevention Partners on occasion. They use, you know, it's just online. Or somebody else.
Correct.
You meet quarterly?
Quarterly.
Did you say you want to put your name on it? I'm being serious, yeah?
Good. You're only one, so I've got a point.
Okay.
There are volunteers.
Okay. Uh, the next one is the theater board, and I'm the city, city's liaison for the theater board. I also act as the vice chairman for the theater board.
How often do they meet?
We meet once a month.
It says that you're the person for that, is that still the?
That is. I, I am currently the city's liaison, and I also serve as the, um, vice president of the board.
Great job, keep that.
Thanks.
Martha, did I hear Martha, did I hear you say something?
And, and I'll be, I'll be honest with you, the theater board, um, probably won't be within the city council after the next year, so. Um, they're current, we're currently in the process of obtaining our 501(c)(3).
So that's a plus, right?
Yes, that is, that is a plus. The chamber is currently Rob and Jaime.
I'll take that one.
And Rob and Jaime, do you want to stay on that one? Council?
Oh, if they want to stay on it, then that, that's fine.
You can have more than just one council member.
It's just a representative from the council to go to the board meetings.
Okay.
More than that?
Okay.
If there's no volunteers, that council appointment.
Um, this one I'm not sure about, SLV Go.
No.
They, I don't know if they still exist.
They still exist themselves, but it's kind of more from back to the day where we actually had order of stationation on it, so. Um, I occasionally go to one of the meetings. But, yeah, so I think, uh, we don't really need a council appointee. I'll just pick those up, would be happy.
Okay. Uh, the TRP, which is the Department of Transportation, is Rob, and they meet monthly.
We usually, usually ten AM, um, in the middle of the hour. But there are always daytime meetings, and they're always, so I can see that. Too big, or I can see that, like, over time, most of the time. Usually go ten to one thirty.
You're good with that one still?
Okay.
Long time period.
Landfill board is Rob. They meet the third Tuesday of every month.
Rob.
That's great, go for it.
Appreciate you, Rob.
The Sky High Committee is Forrest, Dale, Gary, and Jaime. The Annexation Review Committee is myself and Forrest.
Do you need more people on it?
Um, it would be nice to have a representation from council.
When do you need?
We haven't decided yet. So we started it last year, and because of the election, Forrest and I decided to put it kind of on the back burner so we could get through the election. And now that election's over, we want to start that back up. So the annexation review is for a three-mile plan. It's to expand our boundaries for future development.
Okay, that's it. Okay. That's it.
And then the last one is the Charter Review Committee, and that's Forrest, myself, Margot, and Esther are the only four members on that board. Which, which board is that? Um, so the Charter Review Board is to review the city's charter. So anything that needs to be changed within the city's charter has to go to vote. So we've sat down and actually, Mar- Margot and Esther have gone through it, and, you know, not, not like the words he or she or this or that. It's substantial changes that we would like to see changed in the charter. And then we have to decide which ones are the most important to take to the voters.
I think you're doing a great job.
And the Annexation Review Committee and the Charter Review Committee hopefully start up in, um, May. And that's it? Um, since I've got this corrected, I will go ahead and email you all an updated copy of the, the boards.
Thank you, Anita.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Citizen comments and special presentations. In order to be on this portion of the agenda, you have to follow the appropriate paperwork with the city clerk, known at later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. You have a Sky High discount request from the Feed Store? I don't think, just give them your own mind. I'm gonna need her wireless one, and she can't wire her through.
So before you, um, is a discount request from the Feed Store Church to hold Easter service, and that would be on April tenth, and eleventh, and the twelfth for setup. So the tenth and eleventh would be for setup. Um, they are a church organization. They, um, so it would be a twenty percent discount. The rental amount is one thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. With the discount request, it would be one thousand ninety-six dollars. And the twenty percent is the max amount discount for a nonprofit organization.
They did this last year, too, Gary?
Yes, they did.
And this doesn't conflict with anything else?
No, it does not. They actually have submitted their application to the rec department, so they have them in the calendar for that dates.
What's the date?
Tenth, eleventh, twelfth.
April tenth, eleventh, twelfth. The tenth and eleventh are for setup, the service is on the twelfth.
Oh, oh, that's, oh.
It's for Easter service. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Um, motion to give the discount to the, request a discount to the Feed Store Church at Sky High.
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded to give a discount for Sky High Park to the Feed Store Church. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Councilor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Councilor Segola?
Aye.
Councilor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Okay. Citizen comments. City council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please let us comment to three minutes. Council will not take action at this meeting. Margot, would you come up and say something for us, please? You have three minutes, be sure and sign the paper.
Yes, sir. Hello, council. Hello, everybody. Thank you for letting me talk for a second. If I can, oh, I'll just use my pen. Um, I just want to say how wonderful the city looks with the cranes. It is just an inspiration, and I see more people stop, get out of their car, click, 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 and it's, I think it's going to do us just phenomenally well. It is such a wonderful thing to see our city do, and I'm hoping the businesses will clue in and sort of spruce up, wash windows, maybe a flower pot in front. You know, I'm going to go around and visit them and say, what do you think? If that's okay, can I do that?
Free world, how to go for it.
Well, I wasn't sure if there was a law against that or something.
Margot? Has there been anything that stopped you before?
You could be on a business flower truck.
That's a respectful question, Margot.
Uh, well, you know, if I see a need, I try to help, or get people encouraged to do, because we have such a lovely downtown. Except for second block of Adams Street, chief. Every day I go past there. Can the city clean it up and give them a bill? Just a question, but it's still there.
Just a quick answer, and then you decide it first. You have to go through it.
Oh, it has to go through all of that? Okay. I just, I, I just find it phenomenal that a person can run a business and have it look that way. My personal opinion, but I just want to let you know, it's still there, go past it every day, and there we are. But the rest of town is really looking spoofy. So, more power to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Margot. Is there any other comments? You, you, don't be shy. You got something to say about what's going on. You guys over here, you guys got anything I'm sure was? Any guys talking back there?
Cameras on.
Thank you, Margot. Okay. Well, it looks like we're going to just move right on down to staff proposals and reports. Forrest, you're up.
You mean mayor, council members, so all the high schoolers in here should give me five dollars for making this meeting shorter. Right? Because it could have been long, but, but anyway.
Does that mean we have to pay too?
No. No, absolutely not. Out of, out of that, uh-
We got a good work session.
Yeah, you have to attend the work session, they don't. Okay, so I've got a couple things here this evening, my regular council report and my 2019 summary. And since you all can read, I'm not going to spend a lot of time in the summary, but I'm going to hit a couple, um, items. And one, you know, uh, I had anything regarding the golf course in my memo that, um, staff and the city council, you know, we, uh, created a updated draft and lease document, which staff felt if that was accepted by the golf course, would provide for better oversight of the club for the season. We felt like that was sorely lacking last year, even though we were totally intentless to provide for that. Didn't happen, and, um, you know, staff will obviously be at the work session, but we find the draft that was returned by the golf club to be disturbing in the amount of less oversight than it's actually looking for in the additional cost of the city. So that should be an interesting work session. I met with the Valley Managers Group, and, uh, basically, all the managers in the valley try to get together and have a, like, quarterly luncheon. It usually works out like five or six of us, and I miss it most of the time, but I see what's this one, and, uh, one of the nice things is, uh, Greg Schulte, who is with the Colorado City County, City County Managers Association, or CCCMA. Um, I'm a member of ICMA, the International City Managers Association, and, uh, so there's a Colorado chapter. I do not go to the conference this year, um, for various reasons, but, uh, he's a range rider, they don't call him that anymore, but basically, it's kind of like someone, Greg's worked in a lot of different communities, so you can call him up and go, head scratcher. Um, so it's a nice professional kind of reference for us. The council, you have CML, which is designed for elected officials, and then managers have, you know, that. So, then there's Sky High, which is rocking right along. Tried to word wrong there in there, sorry. But I processed like twenty-five thousand dollars in donations this week, and I've probably got another twelve thousand, fourteen thousand in the safe right now that I need to process. So money's coming along. Um, we also had a meeting this morning with, uh, Kathy and Carla, friends of Sky High, along with OEDIT representatives from DOLA, myself, to talk about, uh, potential DOLA funding for the construction project, and that's a million-dollar ask, and that one's due ironically April first. So, uh, you know, unless the council objects, I'll be writing that one, and, uh, you know, we kind of ran into issue on our first application where it twenty million dollars and thirty- and $36 million in applications. And you have to understand that those grants are mineral impact grants. We don't get a lot of mineral impact points here, right? So if the round's very competitive and it's from a county that has a lot of negative mineral impacts, and they close the mine, like let's say up by Kremlin, right? Where a power plant closing down, a coal mine is closing down, they get lots of credits for that. So the program's designed for it, but we have been competitive in the past when it's not too much. So DOLA invited us to go ahead and take this shot here April 1st. Ours will go ahead March 31st, because, you know, I don't like April 1st as a deadline. But we'll get that done on a staff standpoint. City did however, receive a different DOLA grant for our Modavista Road and Water Master Plan, and we applied for that. And it's about $93,000. It's a 50/50 match deal, but we got that. That was great. I did not write that. Our, actually our contract engineers, Element Engineering wrote that in conjunction with Rob, so that was pretty cool. So we would like also request that the April 16th council meeting be moved to April 23rd, if it's not too much of an inconvenience. And Counselor Foster, are you going to go to the Springs with us?
Yes, I believe I am.
Okay, outstanding. So we'll take care of that, we'll let you know, but we got the hotel and all that stuff lined up. So at that council meeting, there'd be potentially three counselors that won't be here, so you guys wouldn't have a forum. Or maybe you'd have a forum, depends. But we're in abundance of caution, you probably wouldn't have a forum for that meeting, so. We're suggesting to the council reschedule that meeting for April 23rd. Couple other just quick things. So the auditors were here. They were supposed to be here for three and a half days this weekend. They were here actual working time, two days. That's a good thing, right? So kudos to our finance director, Jenny Sines, and her staff, as well as the rest of our staff for keeping all the money in order and doing a good job, but mostly Jenny's staff and, you know, they're doing a really good job. And so, you know, I talked to the auditors, some had lunch with them, and they didn't ask me some of those questions that I heard five or six years ago. So really nice job being done there. So kudos to that. So my 2019 summary and report, you know, picked the top 12. I don't know why the top 12. But I think, you know, I'm not going to go through each one of those, but, you know, I think the first four are pretty significant. Sky High Park Project, can't say it enough, you know, the citizens have led that initiative. The user groups have come together, and everybody after many, many years have a great program on the ground. And I'm involved in the design team, or the actual people that do the construction designs, because I know something about that as well. And that is moving along. And these guys are asking all the hard questions, and are getting it together. But the friends still need to raise, let's say $150,000 in the next few weeks. So anyone that's watching on YouTube, you know, write your checks. Bring $100, you get a tax credit. $50, you get to feel good. You can donate on, through PayPal online, you can bring checks to the city, you can bring them to the chamber, et cetera. So they're kind of in the final push, but you're talking about a small group of people who've raised over $600,000 in just a couple months. So that's pretty darn exciting. The One Cent Tax Initiative, once again, that's the citizens taking a good look at the future and providing additional funding for street maintenance and paving, for police officers and equipment, and for recreational programs for the Sky High Park Project. And the recreational part is a really important component when the friends of Sky High are out talking to grantors, because it's like, hey, the citizens have stepped up to support this project. So it's really exciting. It's like, you know, one-two punch, and I think we can get it done if the community continues to pull together. You know, National Night Out this year was great, and the city open house at the same time, so it's like the police department and Public Works, along with Neighborhood Watch, and Back the Bark folks, which, you know, all came together, and I think it was a really good event. Again, it wasn't much larger than the previous year. I think it was a really great turnout, it was a lot of fun, and it's a good community event that hopefully we will continue. The CML has dropped the city open house program that they used to have, so we won't have any CML tchotchkes, you know, stuff to give away, this little fun stuff, but I think we'll still have burgers and all that other stuff that we had, along with the exhibits from the city. And we're working on Airport Master Plan, which is really, you know, scintillating stuff with the FAA. Rob does most of the heavy lifting on that, along with the airport board. You know, and there's going to be some challenges meeting the FAA requirements going forward, but we'll get there. And we also transitioned to a new fixed base operator, who's Jed Elthorp, and he took over from Art Jones, and Art Jones basically retired and did a great job out there. Jed's very energetic and working at pumping some additional customer life into the airport, so that's pretty exciting. And I got a shout out to Public Works, because they got the first new street paving project. You know, the last one before that was Prospect down here in front of the school after that was done. But, you know, Dunham was really cool. It was a new concept. We tried something out different. Rob worked hand in hand with the contractors, was design, build, and it came out, I think, really, really well. Learned a few things from it, like, you know, our water lines are probably in the ground a little bit too long. I think Rob, if I recall, brought a nice valve so you could see what they looked like, and that was the best one. So, you know, his crew and the contractors did a really nice job, and obviously it's now something we can replicate going forward. So, you know, that was really cool. Really enjoyed that. Water augmentation, I don't know why I'm going to talk about that, other than say that it is the most dreary fight you can imagine. You know, it pits neighbors against neighbors. And, you know, the city owns shares in a number of ditches, and basically all the ditch companies got together and got themselves one attorney against our attorney, and, you know, our attorneys, if you will. And it's like, you know, fighting over every last drop. We are making progress, we're making some headway. You know, some of the stuff, it's pretty frustrating. And if any of everyone want a really detailed diatribe on that, I can talk about it for hours, so, but I won't do that tonight. So that's really all I've got to mention, except for, you know, Crane Fest is, it's here, right? And the cranes are here, and the cranes are on our light poles as well. And kudos to Rob and his crew for getting those up, and for, you know, Ken Hamco and the Chamber of thinking of the idea. And kudos to our community, the artists did some amazingly cool stuff. And literally, as Margot said, you see people stop and they get out of their cars, they're walking down the street, and they're taking pictures and checking it out. And that is super cool. And I expect this weekend, we'll have a lot more downtown traffic because of that. And some of those people will stay longer downtown. You know, the theater's being used for part of the Crane Festival again this year, so it's, it's actually really cool. So I think that's all I have this evening, unless you have any questions. Excellent.
Forrest, before you take off...
Start it.
You missed your number four on the URA.
Oh, I did, sorry.
That one is been a long time coming.
Yeah.
Why don't you share that?
Okay, sorry, Mayor. Yes, what a long strange trip it has been. It has. That's why I put that in there. So the Modavista Urban Renewal Authority, I don't know if y'all know how rare it is for a small community to actually have an urban renewal authority. And ours has a very positive history in the community. The whole kind of downtown realignment project, where the visitor center, all that stuff happened with the help of the URA. Then the URA decided about four years ago to try to take on blighted properties in the city, primarily residential. We had to write a new plan, which took many, many months, and get it approved and all those things. But then we got a grant from the state. We're the first entity in the state of Colorado to get a CDBG fund from the DOLA Division of Housing to do what we're doing. That came with some pitfalls, because nobody had ever done it before, right? So we had to write a new manual, which took both the Division of Housing and the feds from HUD, because it was CDBG funds, for them to approve it, and it took almost two years to get the manual approved. But now there's a playbook for it, so other communities can benefit from that. That's great. It took a while to get our deed restrictions approved. Our city attorney finally got to review a draft that the state thought was okay. So, so we're making a lot of progress, but the really, really cool thing is at the end of this month, we'll start our debt, well, we've done one demolition, we're going to do four more. And we'll definitely be getting that out there, going to tear down some houses, you know, and we're working on a, the plan to replace those right now. And I'm going to go to a couple of meetings that regard financing for those. And the state's got some new not federal funded projects or funds, so things are looking up for that. And I really applaud the members of the URA Commission that are appointed by the city for sticking with this. It has been a grind, but I think we'll start to see the benefits to the community. So thanks for pointing that out, if I missed that.
All right, who said it's one time coming?
It has been.
You've got it too.
I've got more gray hair than when I started that part.
Yeah.
All righty. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Forrest. Mr. Vance, you're up.
Good evening, Council. Everyone, I am here to give you guys my annual report for 2019. Forrest took a little bit of my thunder, but we'll just keep it short, we won't go too far. So, that's some of the things that Forrest talked about. 2019 was kind of some first for Public Works, some very first things that I was very proud of. 2019 started with the snow and the redoing of our snow policy, so that was a long process and took most of 2019. And we adopted a brand new snow policy at the very beginning of this last year, November-ish, I guess, towards the end of 2019. I think it's worked out really well. I think it was a lot of time spent, had community input, and I'm hoping the community likes the changes. I know it's not a perfect policy, but at the same token, I think it's, it's a lot better than what we had. And I think the snow, even though we haven't had any major snows this year, I think the snow events that we did have were handled better. And I also think, from what I've seen and what I've seen on the phone calls, the public liked. Didn't have anywhere near the complaints that we've had in years past. So that's always a good thing. Another first for the apartment was we hired our very first female utilities operator. She came to us highly certified and has proven to be really quite exemplary as far as an employee and her skill set. You met her at the last meeting. She's been with us just a year now, so that's, that's always good. It's good to see that the field's increasing, kind of always has been, and it's going away. It's been a man's thing, and it's really not. So glad to see that. And as Forrest touched on, our first paving project. I've been here with the city for eight years. Up until last year, we've done one. And the one we did before that was not an actual paving project as much as it was a rehab project. When the, the new high school was built, they didn't do any planning for all the utility cuts that had to take place to put the new water and sewer lines into the new building, so we basically did a mill and fill. So what we did last year was an actual take a dirt street and make it pavement, modified as Forrest said. We did work with the only contractor that we have in the area, asphalt contractor, there's only one. We kind of sole sourced it, and was able to involve him from the design process, which is completely different than how most go, is I sit down with engineers, we design a project, and then we send it out to bid. And every time you do that, the contractors that bid on a project have to weigh the risks. And every time that there's a risk that they have to weigh increases the cost. So by doing a design-build with the only contractor that does this type of work in the valley, it eliminated a lot of risk that he would assume through the normal bid process. He had his input from the get-go before anything was designed. It, give you example, dollar-wise, same distance, Dunham Street versus what was done out here on Prospect. The difference is Prospect was one inch, what was done on Dunham was three inches. Prospect cost the city $93,000. The asphalt for this project was $47,000. It was a matter of risk. The contractor was involved from the beginning, so he did not have the risk. Savings, what was it, 2015 versus 2019? So no inflation, and it still saved the city almost $50,000. So, so pretty impressive. Other first for the year, we got a SCADA system. I kind of touched on that in my report a little bit, so I won't bore everybody, but basically a SCADA system on our water and sewer allows us to monitor what's actually happening in the pumps and in the treatment processes. We've never had that. So if we had a power outage, we were just like anybody else. We waited until either didn't turn the lights on, or we got that phone call saying, hey, we don't have any pressure over here, there's something wrong. Now we have it where it's on our phones. If we have more than a 10% drop in any of the pressure on any of the wells, we get notified. So that's going to be a huge benefit for us as we go. We have our three main pumps that's hooked up on the SCADA from last year, and we'll work this year and next year to get the remaining two on the same system. And then our entire system will be SCADA. We can start, stop, and troubleshoot the three pumps that we have on the SCADA system now from our smartphones. So we have the ability, if something's going wrong, we can reset the pump and start it up and never actually have to go to the pump house. So it gives us a lot better response time. So those are pretty good things. And then really, kind of want to switch to this year and some of the things, we've been really busy so far, doing some pretty cool things. Last year, we put in for a tree board CTC grant, and we just got notified that we did receive it, $1,500 to continue planting new trees within the city. And we will do that again with her, in conjunction with Arbor Day. So I'd like you, or somebody from council, April 24th, to do an Arbor Day celebration. Anika for the kids connection?
Thank you.
So we celebrate Arbor Day with planting of trees. This year, I think we're going to do it Sanchez, Sanchez Park, 10 a.m., April 24th, plant some more trees down there. We're going to do another evergreen down in that area. So just try to beautify. We've got eight total trees that came from the grant. So we'll be planting those in Sanchez, removing the...
Yes, sir. What time work is that?
10 a.m. 10 a.m. Removing the two dead trees on Adams and put in two ornamental trees along Adams in the bulb out there in the middle of the 100 block. And then six trees in, yeah, six trees in Marsh.
One in Follin Lighter.
Yeah. So, so just put that on your calendars. And then the last thing, which is the thing I'm most excited about, last year I approached the shop teacher for the high school, Mr. Woodkey, and asked him if he and his shop classes would be willing to do a partnership with the city. It's one of those things that I think a lot of schools have kind of neglected for several years, but when I was in school, shop class was really big. The school I attended had not only an automotive course, where you actually rebuilt cars and built cars, and I drove my 1968 Mercury that I built in my shop class with the 351 Windsor. So, and likewise, we also had a construction trades, building houses. We used to build homes... We used to build homes that the school district would sell. So I had talked to Mr. Woodkey about if their shop class could maybe help us do a real-life project at our wastewater plant laboratory. And that is do a complete remodel. So, we, we approached City Council first. City Council approved it, and then we went to the school board and the principal and superintendent, and they approved it. And we started in December, and we're just about ready to finish up here within probably the next week. But we have completely gutted and remodeled our laboratory. We are a certified lab for wastewater treatment, and we do a lot of our own laboratory testing procedures. And the young men and women from the various shops classes have come out in the afternoons and have not only gutted, but they have replaced the cabinetry, the cabinets, the flooring, and got into some plumbing and have replaced the plumbing. So I'd like to invite Council to come and the newspaper if possible. Try to get a date next week if we could, or the week after, to kind of have a photo op so I can get an article in the paper and just really celebrate not only a partnership between the city and the school district, but the young men and women that have done that. I think they did a fantastic job. They replaced the doors, the windows, as I said, the cabinets. So a complete remodel, complete remodel.
Is that location up on the road?
It is.
That's what's leading.
So, yes, it's been out there. We had a Connex, we bought a Connex and stored everything, and the young men and women would come out about two o'clock, two-thirty every day and work until about three-thirty. Yes, ma'am, that's the one. And like I said, they've done a fantastic job. And these are young people that have not had it. If they choose to pursue the career path, that's fantastic. And if they don't, it'll go to help them in their futures. I mean, all of us at one time or another are going to have homeownership and face the lovely task of wanting or requiring some sort of remodel in the house. And what a better skill set than to be able to do it yourself, or to be able to be employed to do that for others. So...
That's exciting.
So, very good. So if I could take a few minutes, is there any time next week? Has to be between two and three-thirty that I could get some council members to go out to the wastewater plant and do the photo op, sign with you, if you could make that available?
I encourage it.
Okay?
Okay. I can't Wednesday.
Okay. Does Thursday work? Two o'clock, would that be enough time for your schedule?
Thursday.
Victor? And to the public, if anybody would like to come out and take a look at our wastewater plant, you are more than welcome to do that. We do testing Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. I would love to have the public come out and actually go through our wastewater treatment facility and see how we treat the human wastes and return it back to the river. So, it's a really good process. I'm really proud of the work that the young men and women did out there. I don't know if any of you are in those classes, but I'm sure you know people that are. They've done an outstanding job. So, alright.
What time again was that? Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's go at two.
Thank you.
Two o'clock on Thursday?
Yes.
Two o'clock Thursday, twelve.
Yes, please. And Council Forrest, if that would work for you, I need to get that over to the school district. Thank you, sir. And with that, I would be opening it up for any questions you guys might have. Okay. Council, thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Nika, our superhero.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. It's been a while since I've been here, but I'm here to present my twenty-nineteen year review for Kids Connection. Just to give you some numbers, we had two-hundred-and-ninety-eight individual children walk through our doors in twenty-nineteen. When I go back and with my report that I submit to the county for our TANA funding, we do this fun little breakdown where when I add up all of the days that we are open, and we had a total of twelve-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-five individual contacts with those over, almost three-hundred different members. So we see a big chunk of kids every single day and just get to enjoy our time learning from them. In January, we kicked off the year with an amazing donation of fifty thousand dollars from the Oak Leaf Energy. That kind of started our year on a really positive note. Twenty-nineteen, I believe for us, was the best we've ever done with revenue coming into Kids Connection. I've been with the program for seven years, going on eight this come, this year, and we've struggled to see the success that we are now seeing. So I'm really happy we are reaching where we want to keep our, where we want to set our bar and keep our bar moving forward with the type of program and the program, the type of program that we're providing to the community. So, with that, February flew by really quick. March brought on spring break. We went to Fort Garland, we got to hang out at the museum in Fort Garland, we got to swim at the community center there that afternoon. We went bowling at the local bowling hour, bowling alley, and then Valley Three Theater opened it up for a movie matinee on that Friday for that week. So, we kept our kids busy for sure. We seem to go through little weeks in the year, and half of the year just disappears. We, it like, it doesn't really exist. The months just mash together because every day is kind of so repetitive, you don't realize how quickly the, the year slips by you. After spring break, we got ready for summer. We hired three additional staff members to help out, so we were full-staffed to deal with the chaos that summer can bring. We had an average attendance of sixty children each day during the summer. Our largest attended day was June twenty-fourth with eighty-seven children that day. Summer came to a close early in August because the school district went back into session really early, but we were not gonna complain about that because we needed a break after that. Then September, October, and November kind of flew by. In November, myself and three additional staff members attended the rural after-school conference in Beaver Creek. And we had, with Kids Connection, the Boys and Girls Club from Alamosa was there, the Center Youth Club was also involved, and High Valley was there. So, the Valley was in really good representation with all of the youth work that we're doing, and it was nice to extend our network of youth-serving organizations. In October, I began attending Bill Metz's PBIS group meetings and participating in their Bully Prevention Education Grant. With that, we are just working together, so we're using common knowledge or common language between the members that we serve, because they go from school to Kids Connection directly after school. So we want to make sure that whatever the school is enforcing, we are using common language so that when they're with us, we're all on the same page. With that, it opens us up to allow to communicate back and forth with some of the struggles that we're having with our positive behavior and support system. And so I can just shoot an email over to the school and tell them, hey, this is what happened today. We would love some feedback. It may carry over to you. It just opens up a lot of communication, so our kids feel like all of the adults that they interact with each day are all on the same page, and we all have their best interest in mind at the end of the day. With that, let's see, December came, and then Christmas break played out really nice for us. The way the holidays broke out, it allowed for a lot of downtime during the holiday season, not only for myself, but for my staff, just to kind of relax and reflect and reset after the really long twenty-nineteen year. With that, I just threw in a couple of things for you to think about. We have a partnership with, we have a partnership with Karen Cher out of Colorado Springs that provides our after-school snacks, our breakfasts, and our lunches during the school year, or during the summer. And with that, we served over five-thousand-five-hundred snacks in the after-school program last year. And during the summer, we serve an average of sixty meals a day between breakfast and lunch, meaning a hundred-and-twenty meals total for the day. So if we're talking about food components, just to give you something to think about, we serve approximately three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty ounces of milk, which ends up being about thirty mil, thirty gallons of milk a day. Yeah. They all come in like individual containers, so we don't see that until I break out the numbers, and I'm like, holy cow, that was pretty cool. So with that, that's pretty much our year. Tried to keep it short and simple. We don't have a lot to, to give you other than we just have a lot of children and a lot of fun personalities to deal with. I see some of my juniors in here that I started Kids Connection with, so it's nice to see their progress. Come back and visit us. Our little kids like, look up to you. Alina was one of our summer staff members, so she knows how much fun it was most of the time. But if I could encourage any of you guys to come back and just hang out an hour a day after school, Daniel, come play some basketball on the courts out of school with us when you see some kids. That little bit of influence that you can give some of our younger kids will go a long way in them pushing for a better life for themselves, so please come out and visit us at least. And with that, that's pretty much it. If you have any questions, I can answer those.
I don't have any questions, but I so appreciate you and what you do. It shows.
Thank you.
Our entire town benefits from what you do.
We try. We really try. Sometimes we struggle with knowing whether we're doing things right. We have kids that every day, as a parent, you get told all the time, you're making my life miserable. I'm like, haha, that's my job because I'm your parent. But with some of our kids, they're like, I hate my time here, and it breaks my heart because we're trying to provide a safe place where they feel included, no matter what, with no judgment. So to hear that from them, I just try every day to try to make that program better for them and to provide a place where they look forward to coming after school, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Obviously, should make a difference in the business life.
Evening, Council. I'm Jim Belknap. I'm your IT director. For some of you, first time you've got to meet me. My team and myself are here under an IGA from the city of Alamosa. We, in twenty-nineteen renewed the IGA after our first initial three years there, doing all IT for the city. So, that's been a mutually beneficial, intergovernmental agreement between the two cities, and we are very pleased to still be here assisting you with your information technology needs. I have a written report in your packet there summarizing our twenty-nineteen season here. It's seven pages of technical work that we've done here at the city, and I really don't think any of us want to listen to a nerd talk about wiring of a building. I, I'd like to point out a few things in that that were important to us, and that one of the big things is the renewal of the IGA for an additional three years. Under that IGA, we supply all services and we enjoy that, that mutual buying power of a larger organization. In the three and a half, almost four years now since we've come on board, retail costs for the services, the equipment, the software, everything IT-related throughout the entire city has been one-point-five million dollars. Your savings, having us here, has been one-point-three million dollars. So, just under two-hundred thousand dollars to have us here for almost four years, including all the hardware. I think it's been a wonderful opportunity to work together. I'd like to tell you that going into twenty-twenty, we, last thing on twenty-nineteen, we want a big hurrah that we won another year with no major virus attacks. The number-one fear of all IT is security of your network, and we have survived another year without any major attacks penetrating our network. Going into twenty-twenty, we'll continue to strengthen that network. And some of the other fun things coming into, actually, now that we're three months into twenty-twenty, we're already deep into these projects. New security camera system here on this building, or just finishing up on that, that's thirty-two security cameras, including the one here in council chambers now, that our police department has full access to. And then we just finished this last week, working with SLV REC and the police department to install what are commonly referred to as traffic cams at two-eighty-five and one-sixty. They're not ticket cams, they're not license plate readers or anything like that. Merely a tool for the police department to use in an emergency situation, but those are up and running now. And that was a direct contribution from SLV REC, who gave us the cameras, paid for the installation, they supplied the fiber, they put a VLAN back to this network, and so they are private for our police department only, and they're maintaining that service and those cameras free of charge to the city. Along the lines of what I was talking about with viruses and such, we are continuing to future-proof your network. We have added fiber to this building now to link the police station to the IT server room to allow future expansion. We finished up the website, the complete website redesign last year. We'll continue to monitor that this year for any changes or any necessary updates to that. We've also been working closely with the state to secure a grant for the mobile identification devices. Looks like that has gone through. We're just awaiting the arrival of those mobile identification devices now. Those devices will allow our police department in the field to simply put a fingerprint down on a small device, and that will read all the way through CBI, is it, chief? So they, they get the full benefit of full background and everything instantaneously to identify a suspect. And the next large-scale item for the city, we are working with multiple vendors. We believe we've already identified our primary one. We are in trials now of a new body cam system for the police department, much like the one we just installed in the city of Alamosa, and I think it solves all the technical issues we were seeing with the prior body cam system. Any questions for me?
Thank you. We appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I bring this to council committee, city commissions, and councilor reports. Ralph, would you like to start?
I would not, sir.
How are you, Larry?
Well, as the newest member of the upper Rio Grande Economic Development Committee, I would like to say that I'm excited about the possibilities, and we haven't had a meeting yet, so I got nothing to say.
Victor?
Well, just looking at these committees as well, you know, just the ones that I kind of volunteered for, the Youth Advisory, the Crane Fest, and the CML Policy Commission, you know, it's just taking a step forward, taking a step, doing it. It's, I had somebody tell me one time, you know, like, well, what are we gonna do? And I'm like, you know, learn. You know, and, and that's what we do, you know, is we learn, and we might not know everything, but, hey... but hey, we're going to learn. So I'm excited for it, you know, I'm excited for these guys, I'm excited for you guys, for all these things, because all of this is just a part of the city, you know? It's like a thread, and if we can get all these threads together and aligned properly, then we will even have a beautiful place to live in. But it takes everybody to work together, so I encourage you guys, work together. Don't be afraid to get in somebody's bubble, tell them hi, give them a hug, shake their hand. You never know what people are going through, and they just might need that, so.
Very welcome.
Very nice.
You're a fellow. You better step it up.
Just a couple of things. The Crane Festival has already been mentioned. I want to shout out to Ken Hamco for coming up with that idea. Of course, the city, the artists, the newspapers have been helping out with all of that, and it is phenomenal. It's an upgrade for that festival, and that's what I have been looking for, and exactly how to exercise that, but he's done a fine job. Was that Coffee with a Cop with the chief and a good crowd? That's always enlightening, can even be a little controversial, so. First Wednesday, eight o'clock AM, but it's held at the coffee shop, so it's okay, the rain bruised. And there's, we talked about Sky High. This is not known to very many people, but construction is starting sometime in the next few weeks on the sign. We have a billboard planned that Alcon is supporting, friends of Sky High are approving, and actual, there will be an actual visual out there before very long, because we've got some of the final okays from everybody else involved, and you'll actually see something out there. It's a huge billboard that should get some attention and some reaction from the community. The other thing is that I visited Alamosa City Council a while back, and Mayor Coleman and several of the councilmen there, specifically Mayor Coleman, put me on the spot and made me do a formal announcement, and it's payback time. So I would like to relinquish my remaining three minutes to Mayor Coleman from Alamosa. Get up here so you're on camera and give us some wisdom from the big city.
Thank you very much for putting me on the spot. I really appreciate that very much.
My pleasure.
Mayor Beckherne, city council, and staff, thank you for giving me an opportunity to come out here tonight. I was really impressed with the way that you run your meetings, and I came here for support for Jim and to listen to his annual report, and also to hear about the savings of one-point-three million dollars that you all are able to save with us collaborating together. I think that's so important. And then what's very impressive is to see so many young people here tonight in the meeting. I think that's very important, especially as we move forward in society. We need young people like you all, being more active in the political arena, and I think, you know, your voices do matter. So I'll keep it short, because you gave me three minutes, but what I like about our working relationship has a community, the Montavista community. When you all succeed, we succeed. I think the San Luis Valley is so important that we find ways to collaborate and continue to collaborate, because together, we're nothing but one team when we work together in the different communities. And the acronym for TEAM, T-E-A-M, stands for Together Everyone Achieves More. So when we work together as a community, as a group, as council, as the San Luis Valley, there's so much that we can achieve. And I was so happy when I came into town today, and I saw those people getting out of their cars, just like the young lady over there said, taking pictures of the crane. So I also wanted to wish you much success with the Crane Festival and this weekend, and I will try to do my best to get down here and spend some money to help circulate it throughout the community as well. But thank you so very much. Have a super fantastic day. Don't let anyone steal your joy, and mayor, when you come to Alamosa, I will return the favor.
Ty, it's always something between us, right? Overriding poker games.
That's right, but we do it fun for the entire community.
That's exactly right.
And I appreciate you showing up to the events in Alamosa. You came out for the Christmas event, I believe, with Rocky Mountain Sur, and you helped out with those younger kids. That was very impressive. So we're just one big family, so let's keep it that way and continue to make a difference.
So the way I look at it is when we talk community here, we talk Rio Grande County or Montavista, but this community is the San Luis Valley. Because we are, whether anybody believes it or not, separate from where else in the world, the way I look at it. Our high mountain valley keeps us that way. So we have to be a community. So when somebody like Alamosa has a problem, we have a problem. Monti has a problem, Alamosa has a problem. So working together, like with Jim and you guys, has been very beneficial to us. And I'll reiterate what Ty said. I know a lot of you guys are here because of class, and you're thinking, geez, really? I have you there? But you guys will be the young people that make a difference for us in the future. Don't be afraid to step out of your comfort zone. I am not a politician. When I stepped into this seat, I knew nothing. I still know nothing. But I'm learning, and that is what it's about. You can step out of your comfort zone and do something. And when you can help the community, irregardless of what people in the community say, if your heart's in it, you just go on with it. You got to be, be able to shed water off the duck's back. You got to be calloused, but it's important. And you guys are, you guys are our future. I'm not that old yet, but one day I will be. We're not as old as Gary. I saw it coming. So I know we're going to have a presentation, but I'm going to give kudos to the shop teachers, little girls with the trees still. The young ladies got a grant to plant trees again. And that's awesome. I can't wait till they're here to tell us about it. As far as the rest of the community, staff's doing great. I appreciate what everybody does and helping us out, everybody. So with that being said, we will recess this meeting until March nineteenth. Thank you.